Well, don't ask that question today. Let us get through the implementation plan before those type of questions are asked.
We find out today.
About what? Ask Mr. Leir.
I'm gonna, there's no reason why we can't vote today. I mean.
Ask Mr. Leir.
I'm gonna, there's no reason why we can't vote today. I mean.
I mean, as you said, you always have a voice, David, and if you have something you want to share with Mr. Leir, go right ahead right now.
I don't have any.
He just wants to know if the option exists.
My opinion is soccer is my life, my idea.
And I think just by you guys being here, people will understand it's important to you. People don't comment, it's not important to them. So, let. I, I think what's important is that allow them to run the meeting. Right? Listen. If there might be a time where somebody might say like, oh, is there somebody who would like to speak to us? Then keep that up to me. But don't hijack the meeting. Remember what I, like, I talked about in the classroom, you guys know what that means, right? Like, you don't take away from it, you don't distract from it, it's not your meeting. So.
There's, there's generally a specific time when we take sits and comments. And, you know, and I would announce that so that you would have a chance to. And, I mean. I don't see why we can't tonight. I mean, the other side of the point though is we could just.
Right. And, and so sometimes. Just waiting.
Whoa. Video tape?
Yeah, it's recorded. Alright, so six fifteen, I'll follow the meeting to order. And just so everyone again knows, the meeting is being recorded. So, we're gonna have a discussion on sports tonight. Two things before we start. So, we. Show over to people that, you know, found yourself somewhat of an issue. Oh, I know these mics are meant to clip on versus you hang out, so. I can't tell you not to do that, but the problem is that with the phone on there, it gets hard to, you know. I do have, you know, little bags, if you absolutely want to do this, or if you can just, you know, talk into your mic. Totally up to you guys what you want there.
I did a sound check all the way around with Sean Robinson, and he could hear everybody.
Perfect, alright, great. And this wasn't muffled at all with the bag on it?
No.
Awesome. Alright, so the other thing that I think I want to make sure that everyone knows is that we've got a lot of correspondence, you know, over the sports program, as you can imagine. You know, so, I just want everyone to know that we're, you know, today in the Merrick's Sports Program, so a lot of the correspondence came from the Merrick's Sports Program. You don't know that it's important, we know all the things that these kids. So we're, like, Merrick's and get here, here, college. And, with that said, I'll turn it over to Sam, wait if that's what he would do. Sam, you can tell us what your, what your plan is.
So, the way we're gonna, we're gonna take temperatures of the students after school. If it's an away team coming to the school, the away A.D. is supposed to take the kids' temperatures before they get on the bus. It was discussed in our meeting on Friday that we, as the whole school, should also take temperatures. That's gonna be on this form that you guys received on Friday, I believe. The Athlete Coach Monitoring Form. That's gonna be documented with who we played. The away school is also going to have that filled out. It is going to be kept in a locked cabinet in my office. So if there is a COVID-19 case with somebody that we played, we know who had contact with that student and who was at the competition that day. We are going to only play on one field this year. Obviously, we're gonna have to practice on multiple fields just so that we do social distance. But all games, field across the street, where we have a fence around the perimeter. There's multiple entrances that we will tape off and only allow certain entrances in order to monitor the flow of traffic and. People who are gonna be spectating the game are going to be required to wear masks. That is going to be posted on the fence. Very visible for everybody to see. We will have a designated adult at every single event. I coach the girls varsity, so the only ones that we really need to do that for is the varsity boys, because we will change. So, if son of P. is here, the girls will be a son of P., so we will need an adult at that game to monitor that, which I don't see. With all the adults working in the school. The NHI has sent out some guidance. The action plan basically was from their guidance along with NFHS. So, you guys got those, I believe, on Friday as well. Basically, if the student is not in the competition, they will have a mask on, on the bench. The bleachers will be moved from the spectator side over to the player side so that we can have six feet. Spectators will need to bring their own chairs or stand on the sidelines. Unfortunately, they say, you know, it's gotta be 10 feet away from the purpose. There needs to be a line. We do not have 10 feet there. But I will go as far as I can without somebody pulling down the hill into the fence. I think that that's important. We will not have ball handlers this year. The years past, the ball went out of bounds, we had a kid running up and down the sidelines handing the other kids the ball that were in the competition. Those will no longer be allowed. The kids will have to go get the ball themselves if they kick it out of bounds and kick it to the other team. The other thing was. Of the, the no pre-competition conferences. So before, every player, the coaches and both officials had to line up the center, center line. They had a spiel that they had to do as officials. All the kids had to acknowledge it. That will no longer take effect. There'll be one player, one coach, and one official there, social distance. Masks are required to figure, to start the game. There's no handshaking anymore. After the competition, you just say, "Good game," give them a wave. One of the questions was backup personnel for coaches and trainers. So, the NHI, the schedules are made in a year in advance. So, this soccer schedule was made last September. Usually, we have to have our schedule into the NHI in July. They have pushed that date. We do no longer have to send them our schedule. We are going to get rid of the schedule that was already created and make a more regional schedule. There's no longer divisions. So we could play, you know, Keen, we could play Conville, we can play people that are closer instead of in Division Four. We're not going to Woodsville or Littleton or any New Market. So everything will be more regionalized there. The schedule is, what they recommend is a minimum of like three days in between competitions. So, a lot of schools that I heard from on Friday are gonna play on Tuesdays and Saturdays. So that gives us enough days to, if there was an incident in the day, in the game on Tuesday, that gives us enough time to try and figure out what we can do for Saturday or cancel the game. There is no minimum number of games you need to play in the NHI as there was in years previous. We could play as minimum as, you know, five games and we could play up to 18 games. There is no penalty for canceling games anymore. You don't forfeit, you don't lose spots in the standings. There is no standings. Basically, what they're trying to do is make it so that the kids can play, the kids get some normalcy and that kind of stuff. Bus transportation. Kids will be required to wear face masks. Only one team will be traveling, so I think that we can get enough distance in between every kid. Our numbers are not that large. I mean, between last year and this year, we only lost four kids, and if you look at the cross-country, that's where most of our kids came from. We had a lot of kids that graduated. We have a lot of kids, I think, that are, you know, not sure they're gonna sign up because we don't have a coach. We can fit all those kids on a bus. The only one would be the middle school where we have 20 kids. I think that maybe he makes a trip that goes on traveling games and it could change. There is. So you have to wear a mask. Your temperature, again, after you get off the bus, will be taken by the whole school so that you can make sure that you're ready to compete. One of the questions was, can remote learners still play? The answer to that is yes. For the NHI, they can still play. The NHI sees them as homeschool students, which are allowed to play in the NHI and allowed to play for Hinsdale. We will know the game schedule. The modifications for soccer. Unfortunately, you can't change the way you play soccer. But you can't just make up rules or take rules out to effectively play the sport. Some of the modifications are, the NHI has their own set of bylaws. Those bylaws have been gone through. Students will not be required to wear mouthguards this year. I think they believe that kids are taking them in out of mouth on the playing surface. They will no longer be able to do that. So they're not required, if you do wear one, you have to have a case, it goes in. Come out of the game. If you touch your mouthguard during the competition, you have to, you get a yellow card, you have to go sit on the bench, and somebody comes in for you. We are going to have hand sanitizers at each bench. You have to sanitize before you go into the competition and after you get out. We will have hand sanitizing stations at each entrance of the facility. So, when you come in, it'd be nice if you put hand sanitizer on, it's there. They are touchless ones, we are gonna, Sean Lee says that we can take the ones from the school, put them out there, and his guys will bring them back in every day. Balls will be disinfected every single day. Sean Lee has given me permission to use one of those U V. lights that he has. We have an office downstairs that's pretty empty. All the balls are gonna go down there after every event. They're gonna be locked in there for 24 hours, and then after, we will get them back out. Spoke about that. Spoke about that. If that's all I got. Take questions if there's any questions.
I was just wondering, how will we be determining who we're playing? So if they're playing a school and they have a high number of cases in their town, or if their school has cases, are we gonna have parameters around that?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I said it this morning. W M R. does that text list every day. I think that the space in between games gives me a chance to look at that and say, you know, we don't really feel comfortable going. I'll obviously be in contact with Mr. Woolridge and Ms. Freetag in regards to those competitions to make sure that they feel safe with us going. It's not gonna be solely my decision if we go or not. There is no, again, there's no ramifications if we do not play those contests. We don't get forfeits, you don't, you know, you don't have to pay a fine like we used to do and have to do in the past. They're just, you know, they're just trying to make it flow and, and make it work for these, these young athletes.
Yep, I have a couple. First of all, I just wanna say thank you for, you know, the, your action plan you gave us last week, and thank you for your, the questions. This was really helpful, both of us. The action plan, it was well laid out. And like you said, it kinda tracked with the NHI guidance, so that was helpful to put them side by side and try to compare them. And your question, you know, your answer sheet to your questions were, were, was very helpful, and I, I have to admit, it's like, you know, we were living with the whole big school reopen plan for months, you know, and. And by the time I got down to the meeting last week with that, you know, kinda knew where I was going unless it was something else, you know. Pretty much knew all day today, and, you know, I, I'm not really involved in sports, I'm not been in sports for, like, I was like constantly on edge, constantly thinking, what am I, you know, because I was not sure. Because what I had, I asked a question last time about Dr. Chen with the ophthalmologist. And I had listened last week after our meeting. Ann had sent us a call that he had done with the Department of Health and Human Services, that I've done with the superintendent, I believe it was. And in that, you know, I listened to that over the weekend, and I was like, oh my gosh, now I'm really uneasy because, you know, the Department of Health and Human Services. Did not get together, whichever way it went, with NHI to work on any, you know, there was no, like, collaboration. So he made a point in one of his, in that call to say, you know, the districts are concerned and, you know, it, it's hard to reconcile the public health. Advice of, you know, no close contact, no this and that, you know, all those things with, with sports. So, I mean, so I was listening to that, and I was nervous, and I was, and I remember I had asked you, you know, what he had said in that press conference, which actually happened to be the day after the call, which, or the day of, which I didn't realize at the time, because I hadn't listened to the call, but. So, you know, and even said in the call that it, you know, remains kind of a point of contention between, sometimes between the Department of Health and Human Services and the schools because they're getting conflicting information from them and from NHI. But I, I do have to say, I mean, and this is one thing about, and I always say this by myself on the board, that, you know, you, you do all your research, you learn stuff, and then, you know, the discussion sometimes will change you another way, or you'll see stuff. So, I have to say, I am uneasy that the Department of Health and Human Services comes right out and says, "We do not recommend contact sports because we don't, you know, close contact is still supposed to be avoided." But however they said, you know, try to minimize stuff. And I thought, well, yeah, how can you minimize soccer? Like you said, you can't change the rules. But I, I mean, I am feeling so much more comfortable after reading your, the stuff you gave us today and the, what you have said and all the questions you answered that. And I know, like, you're the A.D., you know that you're the guy responsible, so, you know, for the safety. So, I have to say, that, totally, kudos, because I, I was like nervous, like, I didn't want to be the only one voting no because of the Health and Human Services guidelines don't totally mess up, but. I think I would be comfortable as long as this is all followed and, and your presentation and your questions and your answers and how, so I'm, I'm very comfortable, so thank you. Which I am very surprised by because I thought, well, there's no way I'm gonna be comfortable, because it's a contact sport, and they're saying, you know, but I think you guys have really put a lot of work into it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a few things. So, I was unclear where we are with the cross-country. What, what's, where are we with that?
So, we lost a lot of seniors to cross-country.
Yeah.
That have been with Coach Hammett for a very long time. Right now, at this moment, we do not have a cross-country coach. So that's where we are. Obviously, we're down six, six athletes off of that team. I also wanted to just touch on the numbers. We also have a lot of kids that, you know, "Oh, my friend's playing this, I'm gonna go play it." This was just the primary signups off of one night, and this is what we got. There was a few emails that I got that had me sign up kids, but I know that there's gonna be more, there always is, once we get going and once we get started. And I think that some of them may be waiting for the board's approval for their T B. sports before they sign up, and. I think that that number is honestly going to go up well beyond last year's numbers. I think kids are really, you know, itching to get, get some sort of normalcy in their lives. I think that parents are, you know, trying to get their kids to go out and exercise, and, you know, they were pooped up inside for six months. So I think that those numbers are definitely gonna go up once the, if the board approves that athletics can happen at Hinsdale.
So you're, you're not concerned about not having a coach then either, right?
The coach is a little concerning. I mean, if we don't have a coach, we can't have those athletes compete. So that's, that's the concerning part. I think COVID or not, we were gonna run into that. Mr. Hammett's been, started the program. I believe it was like 10 or 11 years ago. He's been here ever since, we've never had to look for another one. Unfortunately, we are at the point now where we need to find another coach for that program.
Okay, so ideally, when would, when would cross-country start? Like, if we have a coach, we have enough kids.
So cross-country will start at the same time. So we'll start, sorry, the, the first day to practice has been moved. The first day to practice was going to be next Monday. It has moved into September 8th is when we can start practicing with competition starting September 18th.
Alright, thank you. Do we have a list or any kind of like preliminary schedule for the games?
I do not. I was waiting to see the board's approval before I had tapped that. I don't wanna set a school up saying that we will play them if we're not gonna have programs, because then that, that sends the other A.D. into a spiral, and he's gotta find a game to fix ours. One of the things that was discussed with the schedules was with their not being scheduled sent to NHI, you can pick up games, you can drop games, like I discussed earlier. But there's also, you know, you can call another A.D. and say, "I can't play this game this day, see if you can find somebody else to play it." And I think that that's, that gap between the two games a week would really help the A.D.'s out. Saying, you know, our, our superintendent or our administration or myself, we do not feel comfortable coming to play today. See if you can find something else, if not, we can try and reschedule for another time when, when the numbers are down or when we feel more comfortable with competing.
Great, thank you. If, if we do vote for it, is, would it be possible for the school board to get a full list of them, a full schedule?
Yes, I will send that up. It'll be posted. So, what we are gonna do, there is no standings for NHI, however, for media, for parents, for grandparents, for school boards, for just schools in general, the schedule is going to be on NHI. You, we'll just postpone games, if we don't play them, we won't delete them. But the new schedule will be up as soon as I finalize one or five teams in within the region. When I say we're gonna play Keen, I don't, I don't see a practical us going to play a Division One school, their varsity programs. That's not realistic. That would not be a pretty sight. And I'm just trying to be honest. I, I would probably schedule with their J V. programs because there is no standings. And, you know, I think it'd be a little bit more competitive, and I think it'd be more fun. So if we do go to bigger schools, I'm not saying that we're gonna play their varsity teams. We might play a J V. schedule if we can only get big schools. And that's just the way it is. There is, however, if we can discuss this another time, we don't need to get into it tonight. There is a Division Four open tournament at the end of the season, depending on how this all goes. Where they will pull your seedings out of a hat. They'll be the same as it always has been for the playoffs, the lower seed will go to the higher seed, and there will be no neutral sites unless there is a spot that allows us that their numbers are down enough. But I said, that's, that's a conversation probably for another time. And I just, but I just wanted to throw that out there for the kids that are present.
I just wanted to let the board know that we've been advertising for the cross-country position since May.
I did. Thank you. So, this is sort of a what-if scenario. So let's say one of our student athletes is at another town and gets off the bus and has a temperature, or vice versa, right? How does that student get home? Is he allowed to ride the bus back home?
Well, what we've tried and do is probably try and call a parent, see if the parent can come pick up the child. Again, we're not gonna be two and a half hours away from home. We would, we put that child somewhere where they're not getting in contact with anybody, whether it's, where the coach can still see them, obviously, so that we have supervision. But not anywhere near spectators, anywhere near other athletes, where they could possibly pass those symptoms on to another student.
So if a parent could not be contact, contacted, or couldn't get up there, the contact student would ride the bus back home?
He would have to. We can't leave him there.
Yeah.
Unless you were, I'm sorry, but go through the whole, I mean, all athletes have multiple emergency contacts.
Correct.
So.
Yes, I do have emergency contacts for every athlete that we could call, and if, if, hopefully somebody can come pick them up. If not, they will have to ride the bus, which then will probably shut us down for two weeks, and we won't play any more competitions for two weeks, and then we'll see where we're at after that.
I just wanted to clarify because that's a great question, Jim, but they're gonna get their temperatures taken before they leave Hinsdale, correct?
Correct, so they're gonna get their temperatures taken before they leave Hinsdale, when they get out of school. Every day, doesn't matter if they have practice, doesn't matter if they have games, no matter what, if they have, are playing in a, a sport, they are going to have their temperatures taken, and they are going to be screened every day before they get on a bus.
Okay.
So, could we make it part of the contract, too, that if your child is traveling? They will be, someone will be available to pick them up in the event of them getting, getting a fever? So then we don't have to deal with them riding back on the bus and shutting everything?
Well, what's the normal policy for that? I'm going with policy. Like if someone gets sick, you don't have to leave or something, but we're going with the policy.
It depends on how severe it is. Before the two schools were, I mean, the boys and the girls, sorry, were traveling together, so there's always two coaches on the bus. I know that we've had kids that have suffered concussions, that we've called mom when we got, the kid had the concussion. Mom could not make it to, I mean, we're three hours away. The kid sat with, with the coach on the way back. Obviously, that's not an option right now. I think that we do have, we have a lot of other emergency things that go into our emergency action plan. If a kid, let's say, breaks his leg and goes to the emergency room, myself or Erica Gray would call the parent and say, you know, "This is what happened, this is where we are, your kid is going to the emergency room in an ambulance." So that's, that's where that comes in. So, I mean, that's, those are the, the normal things. We don't usually try and, you know, call a parent if a kid has an upset stomach and can't ride the bus. This is a little bit different, obviously, but that's, that's our normal policy, because they just ride the bus.
Yeah, I think that, you know, maybe it's just, it's expected that this is different, and, you know, if we get to play, then if someone has symptoms or a fever, they're prepared.
That's why I wanted to clarify that they're getting, they're kind of checked just before that, before they get on the bus, and we're playing just regionally. As in the likelihood of somebody not having a fever when they got on the bus. So, when they get there, as we do, especially because we're not trying.
I did. In the paper of last week, they kind of outlined the game manager. Can you kind of explain that a little bit more, Jeff?
Manager?
Yeah. More or less a compliance manager again.
So we, we always have either myself or Erica Gray here, or if neither one of us is here, we have somebody from the administration that goes to all contests. Again, I coach the varsity girls, so when the varsity boys are here, Erica Gray is in charge, who is our athletic trainer. So when the varsity boys are here, Erica Gray is in charge, who is our athletic trainer. I think the, the game manager will be myself or Erica Gray or somebody that we, Ms. Freitag and I feel comfortable with doing it. They will go around and make sure that everybody's got their mask on. You know, we're not going to get a tape measure out and say you're six feet apart. But, I mean, I think that that's, we're definitely going to make sure that they're six feet apart. The hand sanitizing stations are going to be available for people to use. And that the masks are going to be required. If you're not wearing a mask, you are going to die. And there's going to be signs posted on every single entrance that masks are required at Hinsdale. And if they don't have one, then you can't compete. Same thing with the kids. If you don't, if you go to practice and you don't have a mask, I'm sorry, you can't practice. You're going to have to go home. There's no excuse to not have a mask because they're at school. But if you don't have a mask, you cannot practice or you may not watch or speculate the game. Even if you're a player who was injured, you have to have a mask or you are not going to be there.
Last question is just about the weight room. Last week I had some concerns about the use of that in high school. I still have those same concerns. How do you see the weight room being used or not used?
Um, I mean, I, I think it's, it's an option. I, I like it to be an option, I should say. I think, you know, it helps kids get bigger, stronger, faster, which helps them compete. I, I, it does get sanitized after every use. What the COVID or not, we have wipes in there that every time you lift something, you wipe it down. You ride a bike, you wipe it down. You run the treadmill, you wipe it down. I think that we need to continue to do that. It's on the regular cleaning schedule for our general staff to clean every single day. So I, I mean, I would like to see it used. We, we could do small groups in there, you know, maybe two, three kids at a time. I, I guess.
Yeah, so for the weight room, a lot of that is normally used when I do concussion or triage of kids. So the treadmills and all the weights and stuff like that. I don't know how many kids are active after school normally, you know?
Not unless you have an adult.
So the only time they can be.
And you're in there helping them recover, recovering the program? Okay, well, thank you. No, that's it.
I do have one more, but I totally forgot. So in your action plan that you gave us last week, the, in the middle or near the back, where there's plans for participation, you have the no contact plan, partial contact plan, full contact plan. How do you determine what plan you're in? You know what I mean? Like, are these like staffs or they?
Um, what I was going to say is that these were, Sean Robinson suggested that we complicate it to different types of contact plans. Just that these were limited to no contact. So these were just options set in place if we were going to be maintaining six feet apart at practices. So like for the no contact plan, kids can stand in one spot and do the activities that are listed by themselves. So that they don't have to have any contact with another child at all or touch anyone else or anything like that. And then if we had less restrictions, we could go more to.
When do the restrictions like kick in? How is that, is that based on, what's the factor? You know, I mean, like, when do you know, oh, wait, we have more restrictions now, so we have to go to the partial contact plan?
Um, to be honest, these were just things set in place. These were plans set in place to give options as to what practices could look like if, if we have restrictions, I guess. I don't know, we hope we won't have any restrictions.
It's the hope, the hope. I think what our plan, you know, I think that part of it was, you know, we, we sat down and did this whole thing together, Erica Gray and I. I think what we tried to do was basically give you what three options would look like. I think, you know, we, we tried to do, you know, what the steering committee did and give you three options so that we can have athletics here in Hinsdale. Obviously, I could be in contact with Mr. Roroge if we need to move any of these. But our recommendation would be to follow the N H I A guidelines and compete in the, in the N H I A against other schools. And that would be the recommendation that we would have.
I think that I was looking at, I think maybe to, in feet that, oh, well, what is it? Like if there's a, if you have a case or what? But no, if you have a case, then you go to whatever, you know, the protocol is in the back there was, okay, ten days, this and that. So you won't even be doing any, so yeah, yeah, okay.
And I really didn't have any questions. I think you guys, Sam, you came previously with the parts for X stuff. I didn't hear that in the, in the mirror. Probably tell your comments that, I mean, you guys did a great job on this. I think it was one of those things you could look through, you could see what the options were, you could see what was going to be done. And it's like, okay, I can, if we can do this, I feel comfortable with that. And I think that that was a welcome amount of less stress. So, you know, and you even covered in the labor, you know, my only concern was, you know, making sure that owner social business thing, or thoughts that I, that you're real keen to do. But you covered that right in the labor. So I'm good. So now what do you guys want to do? You guys want to do, Anne, how many people are on the call? Do you want to do, how much you want to go around? There's only twelve, but you have to do a minute each. All right, so, yeah, all right, so Anne, do you want to do your normal?
Yeah, okay, so I'm going to call on you. Please unmute yourself. Anne, I think this is the effecto.
And you're doing max, maximum one minute, right?
Yeah, maximum one minute. I guess Anna Steve doesn't, Sean Robinson, do you have anything? Julie Kenyon, do you have anything?
I'm starting to get worried, they can't hear you.
Crystal Gaffney, do you have anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Thank you. Erica, Killily?
Nope, I'm good.
Terry?
No, I just want to say thanks to Sam and Erica for all their hard work on behalf of our kids. And I think that they've done a great job and I think we have a good plan in place.
Thank you. Gina?
I don't have anything at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Donna?
No, I'm good at this time, thank you.
Matt?
No, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Jen Taggart?
No, thank you.
April?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
All right, Lee, anything? My only comment, I, from observing, well thought out, it was a nice test that he told, it was, it was a litmus test, sort of, that asked. I think I saw great questions and good answers and good job for our board. And I'm going to suspect that you guys might be looking at that, that's like a heart killer guy. Teresa?
No, I just want to thank the board for having a special meeting to discuss it separately. And of course, for Sam and Erica for their work and working with the N H I A, the N H F S and the administration to expose something to the kids who need to play. And also for the board to have that, the email to allow parents to be able to express themselves. So I just appreciate your work and our collaboration, thank you.
So please, I'm sorry, I don't know all your names.
Do you want me to call them?
Yeah, if you do, because others are just, they just, you know.
And Sean, Sean, you also have ladies over here.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Okay, just making sure. Haley? Megan? Krista?
I'm on the, I'm on the single A scale, like senior year, I think it's most important. So high school and I'm looking for sports and I'm fully on desk with you.
Thank you.
I agree with everything. Yeah, I'm going to agree too. It's just, I think sports are a good part of a lot of students' lives here, especially if it's just a good sports community. It's really important to us to see it happen. And I think that's going to be a really good job of helping out, just displaying up a good voice.
You have to leave it?
Yeah, I'm going to agree with that.
I agree with you all. That's it.
All right, so I'm going to make your motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal to participate in N H I A sports.
Okay.
Is that all?
Yeah.
Maybe you've got your gym?
No.
Oh, I thought I heard the whole.
I thought I heard a sound, sorry. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
All right, so your motion and a second, any further discussion?
Not that I wouldn't second, I just thought I heard that, that's all.
Well, I heard a sound somewhere, so I didn't know if that was a second or something. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Will it be another, like, conversation?
I've seen it, it's not good.
Like, will we have another?
I, I think we were just trying to get a follow off the ground.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, the idea is that.
There will be another one for winter if N H I A sees it feasible.
That wasn't really part of this.
We were just trying to get follow off the ground. I think once the fall starts and N H I A gets some more free time, I think they will start looking at basketball and, and the winter sports. But I think their main focus was to get soccer and all those other sports off the ground. I will, so I'll start working on the schedule. I'm going to try, you know, maybe go to Stevens, but I'm going to try and keep everything within an hour. You know, there, we're pretty remote here. So it's, it's hard to find schools, but I will try and stay within an hour. And if not, then I will ask you or Ms. Freitag, Mr. Roroge, or email the board and just say, you know, I'm thinking about trying to schedule this game. If you do not feel comfortable with it, please let me know, we will not do it. I think that that's going to be a huge part in this whole thing is communication. And if we feel comfortable sending our kids to things, and if we don't, then we don't. And we will cancel them and we'll postpone them to a different date.
Good job. May I ask one question though? Will you have your life of the athlete meeting with parents and, or how are you going to do that?
Oh, so we, I am going to do that. Mr. Roroge and I did discuss that. I may do it in sections in the gym, like we usually do it. So, you know, we'll do varsity girls one night, varsity boys after that. Try and do two meetings a night where these guidelines will be presented to every single person in attendance to that meeting. They will have, we will have conversations. And if the, the guidelines will be brought to every single person that I think will be in attendance at the games and the athletes themselves.
Very thorough, thank you.
All right, Wayne, do you have something for us?
I just have, I'd like to, first of all, thank Sam and Erica for a well thought out plan. So appreciate that effort and I'm happy for the student athletes. As that's something to look forward to that, you know, would have been, would have been hard to do without that. So hopefully we can continue to move forward and we'll monitor it, as Sam said. The only thing I have today is we did meet with the leadership of the Hinsdale Federation of Teachers today, Kayla and I. And we've been told that September eighth would be an appropriate start date. We have a lot of work to do as far as allowing and making sure that we have the adequate time for people to be prepared for that start date. That would be the Tuesday after Labor Day. So if the board's okay, because I know parents are very, you're in, many students want to know what that date is. Because, you know, obviously we need a little more time to adjust. We have to wait until last Wednesday to make sure that we're all on the same page as far as our start. So if the board's okay, and that would be nice to have a motion, we agree to that and then it will be public. It would match the date of the soccer. And so basically for us, unless something changes, which you know that can happen. We would start with our first day of students on the Tuesday after Labor Day, September eighth.
And just, and staff will be coming back as per the plan.
Right, so we've got a lot of work to do as far as P D. But mostly we're going to try to accommodate more of personalized P D approach. In that the, you know, each room, each section, if it's the primary grades, intermediate grades, if we'll have different scenarios that we'll need to work that through. So we'll need our, our stakeholders, our staff to get together under those circumstances. And really, I mean, the implementation needs to be granular. It needs to be a ten-ten on a Tuesday, this is likely what's going to happen, you know, kids are, here's how we feel comfortable in all of this. So getting to September eighth, you know, we've got a lot of work to do. But September eighth, all parties have agreed that we can do it. That's where we, unless something changes.
So when you say about staff, so their first day of school, their first report day, whatever, is not changing? Or is it?
So we don't have that worked out yet.
Oh, okay.
So we still have the eighteen to nineteen for the new staff. And then we still, we're looking at a number of days, possibly six or even eight days. We're kind of figuring that out. We want to give our staff, we don't want more than four days in a row to run into as far as P D. So we're working that out. I know the union leadership's working it out. I know you and I will be talking to parents and I will fly into the some of that as well.
Oh, okay.
So that is, we'll be ready with the whole, everything by the nineteenth. But hopefully, maybe you would allow Sean to kind of help me negotiate and give them to other people in different places, you know, to make that go. So start to notify staff prior to the nineteenth.
Yeah, I was going to say, you need to notify before the nineteenth, but you'd be like, oh, are we coming in like tomorrow, you know? Yeah, not, or next week, okay, yeah.
So we, we have some work to do. I don't want to, I don't want to be too optimistic that everybody will be satisfied. But I, I think I've done a job at this point in reminding people, trying to get our arms around everybody. And we're trying to make every scenario work and we totally understand they're different. There are different expectations and needs. But the start date, which is kind of what we've got to get out front as soon as we can, would be that September eighth pending your approval. Changing calendar.
Julie?
So if there are.
Let's get ready to motion. And I'm like, wait a minute, that's not time yet.
If there's no further questions, I'd be, I'm happy to.
I make a motion that would make the official start date for school September eighth, twenty twenty.
Motion in the second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, September eighth is our start date.
Thank you very much.
All right, so I only have, Anne, did you consider, do you have a question? Oh, you're going for your water?
Just, I have a quick question about this summer. While we're talking about the start date, that should, that's going to be posted, that information is going to go out to parents and stuff. We'd also talked about like a summary that's less confusing to post on the.
Yes, I sent that to Wayne.
Or some, anybody could put a summary up.
So I, I did vet it with Anne and she is absolutely good. It was very complimentary. I vetted it with Joe, who's on vacation today, but he will be checking his email in the morning. So by tomorrow morning, eight, nine o'clock.
Then we can add that date to it, the summary.
We'll, we'll put that on if it's okay. I mean, you've seen it, I think it's great.
I haven't.
I don't see anything you already have.
Yeah, no, I haven't.
Just a one-page summary that just kind of breaks down the plans in a way that's, you know, it's that one-page overview that an advertiser would want. If they were trying to communicate a message in a way that the audience would remember and be able to communicate it better.
You can hang it on your fridge.
Yeah.
Well, we posted the whole sixty-four page thing, but then after the, I, I know I had a lot of people, you know, reach out, go, okay, so what, what's happening? You know, what does this mean? So a one-page summary just seems like so convenient and easy.
It was very well done. Can you add, would you mind?
I'll add the date and resend it.
And if you send it to Anne, Anne can send it up to you.
You got it.
And I can send it out after you guys look at it, like maybe tomorrow evening, like you send it out for all that.
Yeah, I'll add that to it. Do you want me to add something about sports voters or keep that separate probably? I would think you would keep that.
So the, the sports vote isn't my suggested edition, but the September eighth day, I don't know if you want to fill that in.
Yeah, I'm going to put, I'm going to add that and then I'll send it to, I'll, I'll add that update and send it to Anne. Yeah, I, yeah, absolutely. I'll get that right, I'll just send it. Yeah, idea, absolutely, I'll get that right, I'll just send it.
Thank you. I suppose you put like a little word saying that this, what's gonna happen, right?
Well, you just say practices start on this date, then, then that just.
How about school and fall sports practices start September eighth?
Yeah, so then they know as well.
So, like, that's great, okay. Yeah, I'll get that up to you, Anne.
Thank you.
Uh, anything else? Does anybody, no? All right, so I just had, uh, one non-public, which is worth a two minute. Um, so if no one has anything else, we have a.
Who's your teacher?
No.
Non-public.
Non-public, darn it.
We're mostly going to non-public, you have a second?
Sure. I got a hairball there. I'm like, anybody.
I texted about how I was raising her hand there.